Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the meeting. The Honorable Director of the Commission. Commissioners, I see that we have some minutes for consideration.
I don't think we have any.
Am I on the wrong one? Sorry, I have the wrong one. Okay. Why? Sorry. Welcome to the tenth meeting. All right. Let's see. Moving into the public hearings, calling agenda item number one, application number two-two dash two-four-seven-nine-four from four-one. Homemade Ink DBA Asahi Grill.
Ma'am, interim chair, if we could possibly take agenda item number two ahead of one. So that Commissioner Miyashiro, who is currently remote, can participate in that as Commissioner Buckley will have to recuse. And Mr. Luke has kindly agreed to the change in order.
Yes, of course, Ms. Herri. So I will be calling agenda item number two, application number two-two dash two-four-zero-six-four from Flavors of Eden.
And Madam Chair, please let the record reflect that for application number two-two dash two-four-zero-six-four, I must recuse myself due to a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you, Commissioner Buckley. You're online. We'll note that Commissioner Miyashiro is present online.
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, thank you, Commissioner. Can you please introduce yourself?
My name is Desiree Loprefito of Flavors of Eden.
Okay.
Ms. Herri. Thank you, Madam Interim Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, your letters in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the July fourteenth luminary hearing testimony was provided interim chairman prior to the public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner Buckley.
Any?
I don't have any questions for that.
Commissioner, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
My motion will be to approve application number two-two dash two-four-zero-six-four.
Second.
Second to approve application number two-two dash two-four-zero-six-four. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, application is approved. Thank you. Commissioner Miyashiro, thanks for joining us so that we could have quorum for this item, and please feel better.
Okay, thank you, Chair, I'm gonna leave the meeting, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. And I'm recalling agenda item number one, application number two-two dash two-four-seven-nine-four from forty-one Homemade DBA Asahi Grill. Mr. Luke.
Yes, good afternoon. To my right is the secretary, N'aku, N-E-O-K-O, Mira, M-Y-U-R-A. She's president of talks of Wayne Luke. We have no changes to the application, and they have been operating on temple nights since for about two months.
Thank you. Commissioners. I'm sorry, Ms. Herri.
Thank you, Madam Interim Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protest, zero letters in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the July fourteenth luminary hearing testimony was provided to interim chairman prior to the public hearing.
There's any questions or type of action?
I will make a motion to approve application number two-two dash two-four-seven-nine-four from forty-one Homemade Ink.
Second.
Then moved and seconded to approve application number two-two dash two-four-seven-nine-four. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, application is approved, Mr. Luke.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Special license applications, calling agenda item number three, application number two-three dash zero-zero-three-eight-four from Park Event Services LLC. Mr. Nakoba.
Good afternoon, Madam Interim Chair. Commissioners, Devin Coleman, representing Park Services LLC. To my right is Jay Park with Park Services, also in the back trying to hide is Manuel Zabacala. So this thing's for services.
All the guys are the best.
It's more fun when we call him up.
I don't even have my glasses on. All right, thank you, gentlemen. And this is for the Catch a Fire concert coming up, correct? Commissioners, questions for the applicant type of action?
So I do have a quick couple of questions. So what is the current ticket numbers at currently?
Currently, it's actually a little slow, so about eighteen hundred each night.
Eighteen hundred each night. And then I know you had listed your forty-five hundred. Was that number anticipated each night or total count for the event?
Each night.
Okay. So many questions I have.
Hearing no further questions, I will make a motion to approve application number two-three dash zero-zero-three-eight-four.
Second.
They moved and seconded to approve application number two-three dash zero-zero-three-eight-four. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, application is approved. Thank you. So happy to hear the context of that. All right, and folks are on the next couple as well. Calling agenda item number four, application number two-three dash zero-zero-three-eight-five from Park Event Services LLC. Mr. Nakoba again.
Chair, also Commissioners, Devin Coleman wants to be representing Park Services LLC. To my right is Mr. Jay Park, P-A-R-K, and also Mr. Manuel Zabacala.
This for the Ashanti and Javu concert. It's making me feel young. Commissioners, questions, type of action?
So again, same question as the previous one. Do you have a count currently, what the ticket sales are at?
Yes, facing a little better, it's about twenty-three hundred. And then so that is one night only, we're gonna cap it at forty-five hundred.
Okay. That was similar security plan?
Yes.
As previous events.
Yes, and it's twenty-one and over. As the previous concert that you guys approved is twenty-one and over.
Okay, I saw that, thank you.
Motion to approve application number two-three dash zero-zero-three-five.
Second.
They moved and seconded to approve application number two-three dash zero-zero-three-eight-five. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, application is approved. Calling agenda item number five, application number two-three dash zero-zero-four-three-three from Park Event Services LLC. Mr. Nakoba.
Good afternoon, Madam Interim Chair, Commissioners, Devin Coleman of Park Event Services LLC. To my right is Mr. Jay Park, P-A-R-K, and to my left, Mr. Manuel Zabacala.
From private event coming up on Saturday, correct?
Yes. It's a funeral, basically.
How many, how many people you expecting?
About two hundred. I can sense it all.
I know it's a funeral, but sometimes people can tend to go overboard the hours, so. Okay, be careful with that, please. Commissioners. Questions, type of action?
Motion to approve application number two-three dash zero-zero-four-three-three.
Second.
Then moved and seconded to approve application number two-three dash zero-zero-four-three-three. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, application is approved. Calling agenda item number six, application number two-three dash zero-zero-four-three-six from Park Event Services LLC.
Thank you very much, Madam Interim Chair, Commissioners, Devin Coleman, Mr. Jay Park, P-A-R-K, and also Mr. Manuel Zabacala.
And this is for a high school reunion. Who's reunion, yours, Devin?
Cannot have mine.
Famous Campbell High School.
How many people you folks having in attendance?
It's in the sunset, so we capped it at twenty.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, questions, type of action?
How many minors do you anticipate? I noticed that you said that minors may be present.
It's a minus one, it's fifty or sixty. And then, but we have measures in place, all the stands, people rolling in.
I'll make a motion to approve application number two-three dash zero-zero-four-three-six.
Second.
They moved and seconded to approve application number two-three dash zero-zero-four-three-six. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, application is approved. Thank you, gentlemen. Oh, one more.
Yeah.
You gotta do that the last one, you gotta do that in the second to the last one.
Item number seven, application number two-three dash zero-zero-five-zero-three from Park Event Services LLC.
Park Event Services LLC, to my right, Mr. Jay Park, P-A-R-K, and so on.
And I see this is another private event coming up on Friday. And what does this one involve?
This one is a, it's another. High school reunion. Not mine, not yours, for that's up to a bunch of people. And it's this Friday from a live date.
Hey, I have a couple of questions. Sorry, so reading on the thing, I know we had said it's another private event, but. I read different, a few different times, so it says forty-ten, so I'm just confirming. And then obviously it does, it states for the Apahana event, so just confirming.
It's a, it's a, okay. Are we allowed, you know? The ten, yeah, it's every power eight, but we allow for.
Okay. Okay, okay. Same number, yeah, about two hundred people.
Actually, I think the count is a one hundred.
Okay.
And same question as the previous application regarding minors.
We don't anticipate minors at this tomorrow night, so.
Motion to approve application number two-three dash zero-zero-five-zero-three.
Second.
They moved and seconded to approve application number two-three dash zero-zero-five-zero-three. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, application is approved. I mean, you also gonna be having a fun weekend. Okay. All right. Calling agenda number, item number eight. Applications number two-three dash zero-zero. Or six, four-two-six dash one through two-three dash zero-zero four-two-six dash four-zero from Marukami Udon, Mr. Wioke.
Good afternoon, Chairman of the Commission, Ms. Herri, Robert Wioke on behalf of Marukami Udon. President to my right, Mr. Tetsuya Ishihara, he is the general manager. First name, T-E-T-S-U-Y-A, last name, I-S-H-I-H-A-R-A. At this time, we have no changes, let's get his report. This is for a special license beer only, this is for the downtown location. And we are. It's located in Fort Tree Mall downtown, right on Kynan at corner. The hours are only from ten to eight. We try to keep it just when we're gonna have the primary customers. So we kind of close at eight o'clock. I mean, as far as stopping your service.
Question, I am familiar, very familiar with that location. Where is the, you're gonna be served from? What area?
It's gonna be actually served from the cashier area. And then we can check IDs and control it that way.
Okay, so, because I know that it's like, you know, cafeteria style where you walk through and everything. So I'm just trying to get a feel for.
Right.
How this would happen. So you order your food first, go through the line, there's the tempura bar.
Right.
And cold, cold takeout stuff, right? And then you guys are gonna have the cashier be the server as well, or is there gonna be a separate server for the?
Only the cashier's gonna be giving it and opening it before he or he or she gives it to the customers.
Okay.
Kind of when they ring it up.
Okay. And I've been there many times, there's, the cashiers are very good cashiers, but lots of them are very young. So are we, do we have folks that are trained to do this? Are we retraining any cashiers?
In addition to having a manager on duty, because that person's kind of handling the alcohol, we'll get them trained.
Great, we've got a question. So looking at your diagram, right? There's delineage for outside of the establishment. Is that gonna be on the sidewalk? Is there gonna be anything served there? Because it looks like you guys have that listed in red is portion of the serving area.
Right, it's the same part that we have tables. Tables aren't indicated on the diagram, but it's stationed up. So it's, it's separated from people, and we have security, a mall security right there.
So I guess my question will be is, do you know, I mean, so is mall security gonna be there the whole time from forty to ten? Is that where they're stationed? Or are you planning to have somebody stationed out there? I just want people walking off your establishment with, with the products still yet after they finished eating their udon or whatever.
Yeah, the mall security is not considered our primary method, it's just kind of backup. We'll have somebody out there monitoring. Make sure it's. No passing of alcohol.
And when you say trial period, I presume that means in consideration of a potential class-two restaurant license down there?
Exactly, that's, that's a purpose of this, yes.
Motion to approve applications numbers two-three dash zero-zero-four-two-six dash one through two-three dash zero-zero-four-two-six dash four-zero inclusive.
Second.
They moved and seconded to approve applications number two-three dash zero-zero-four-two-six dash one through two-three dash zero-zero-four-two-six dash four-zero inclusive. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, applications are approved. Thank you, Mr. Wioke. Good luck. Item number nine, application number two-three dash zero-zero-four-two-eight-one and two-three dash zero-zero-four-two-eight-dash-two from Parks Event, from Events International, Mr. Schneider.
Rich Schneider presents CEO of Events International.
See what's that? And this is for a special general license.
This is for the rodeo, which we've done twelve years from.
Many people you expecting?
I would say on the four nights, probably fifteen hundred to two thousand on the first two nights, approaching three thousand on Saturday, Saturday.
And we're assuming all ages, right? This is a family.
This is a family event. We have a very strong security plan, I mean, we've got twenty pure security in the stands and throughout the area. We have additional six IP staff. Everyone who comes in is banded, and they're, you know, they have a different band for overs and unders. And then, of course, we have HPD that manage traffic.
Commissioners, questions, type of action?
You mentioned that you've done this in the past, have you served alcohol in the past?
Oh, yeah.
And have you had any issues in the past?
We've never had.
We had talked about HPD being on the road and in the front. So are those gonna be, they considered special duty officers?
Yes.
Do you have a number you're requesting?
I think it's detailed, six.
Six, okay. The other question I had is looking off of the map, I know you've done this numerous times, you said, but this is the first time I'm seeing it. So the red portion in the map, is that the whole area you want to be part of liquor consumption? Or are you looking at only the yellow delineated areas, which are area of, what is, respected to attendance?
Yes, so consumption and sales only within that yellow area.
Okay.
To make things easier for the commission, we license it in a rectangle because it's.
Yes.
Okay, I get you, I get you on this.
But we actually, one of the other things that we do is, there's an area beyond this where the contestants, you know. And we police that area regularly, it's in the map. So we make sure that it's all clear.
And Mr. Schneider, I asked this of other applicants, and I probably asked it of you before, but if someone is over-served and they're not able to drive home. You folks have some overnight parking available and some.
They can park on, yes, there's a huge parking lot, obviously, they can park there. We also offer Uber numbers to, you know, guide people to.
Yes. Yes, please, you know, colonial and holy highway, we've had many fatalities, so let's try to keep our community safe, yeah.
For sure. We're happy to say that, for the most part, we haven't, with this event specifically. I mean, it happens, it's from seven to nine, it's not a really long event. We're quite aware of what we need to do.
Motion to approve special license application number two-three dash zero-zero-four-two-eight.
I've been moved and seconded to approve application number two-three dash zero-zero-four-two-eight dash one and two-three dash zero-zero-four-two-eight dash two. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, applications are approved. Thank you, and have a great event.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number ten, applications number two-three dash zero-zero-four-three-five dash one through two-three dash zero-zero-four-three-five dash seven inclusive from Seventeen A Productions LLC DBA Nightmare.
Yes.
Hi, good afternoon.
Rick Shibasaki-Garro, R-I-C-K-S-H-I-B-A-S-A-K-I hyphen D-A-R-E-A-U. Fine for special events for the annual Halloween bar, and December will be Christmas bar, Winter Wonderland, I'm sorry.
Next, questions for the applicant?
I know, I think last year, right, you had done some similar stuff, correct?
Yes.
During that time, did you have any issues or any things come up or happen?
No issues, no citations. They did check for, at that time it was COVID restrictions, very smooth, all wanted security is very helpful. And being in the mall, we're fortunate that it does keep, do the refracts at day, you know. And it's more family event, annual event, not the. They did move us to a new location, if you can see, we have a different map. So in there, it's a bigger space, so we're at the former Long East location, and it's been vacant for a while, so we have big cleaning and everything. On the former location, we had, somebody did sign a long-term lease, so we always are out for whatever's available every year. So next year, we'll probably have something else.
Okay, so this is the former Long East space?
Yes, right above Morton's.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I know your number says about one hundred and fifty people. Um, for the day and night situation, are you guys looking at a larger number, or is that kind of where you guys were last year?
Last year, we did ninety, and that's what's.
This smaller space.
This one, we're gonna have a little standing room area without restrictions. So that's why we increased the number by about fifty. Entrance is only via elevator, so I think we're gonna just.
I was gonna ask about that, if they still, that space shares the elevator?
No, we have our own, Morton's has their own, and we have our own right next door.
Okay.
So entrance and exit is through elevator operations, once we're done, last customer, we lock the elevator, and employees will leave through the fire. That fire escape is shared with Morton's.
You know, probably what, you decided gonna banning people right at the elevator, or when they get to the purchase?
ID check at elevator, only twenty-one and over. And then last year, we allowed families just for pictures, but because we don't have like street drainage, I guess, families won't be encouraged to ask to come in. It's.
Yeah, I had clarification on that, the application said that there were going to be minors, so are you saying?
Last year, we had big picture windows at that one cotton some location, so foundations that did walk by asked to come in. This year, they won't be able to see anything, so we're just gonna do strict.
Motion to approve application numbers two-three dash zero-zero-four-three-five dash one through two-three dash four, zero-zero-four-three-five dash seven inclusive.
Second.
They moved and seconded to approve applications number two-three dash zero-zero-four-three-five dash one through two-three dash zero-zero-four-three-five dash seven inclusively. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, applications are approved. Calling agenda item number eleven, applications number two-three dash zero-zero-four-five-five dash one through two-three dash zero-zero-four-five-five dash four inclusive from Seventeen A Productions LLC DBA Nightmare. Mr. Shibasaki-Garro again.
Thank you.
Oh, no, no, we're on number eleven.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Yeah, then you have Winter Wonderland. Okay, so we're at agenda item number eleven, and these are for dates October twentieth through the thirty-first, I think.
Yes.
So this is the same setup as the previous agenda item, correct?
Correct. Same location, everything, same team.
And I think my biggest concern would be on the actual Halloween night. Are you folks planning to have any additional staff? I think we should.
We do, we will have additional staff. So what happens is usually like going for last year, it's pretty mellow until nine o'clock time. And it's actually one of the slower nights, because everybody goes to YK. You know. So, so it is busy, but it's not busier than the weekend.
My other question, and this, you know, I do this with all the Halloween events, because people are gonna be coming in costume. So are your, your ID checkers and your servers trained to recognize folks when they're in costume?
Mask removal, the eyes, nose.
Okay, this is a good time for it to have your ID checkers practice asking people their address, their birthday, you know.
Or scope.
Yeah. What's their sign?
Then on the application, we did apply until eleven fifty-nine on the thirty-first, so we're just wanting to clarify, we're not going past into the two AM. But previously through the other parts of the month, we applied for two AM, just if it's busy for Friday, Saturdays. But we won't be going into November first, just, but we will close at eleven to nine.
On the.
On the.
On the thirty-first, okay.
Motion to approve application numbers two-three dash zero-zero-four-five-five dash one through two-three dash zero-zero-four-five-five dash four inclusive.
Second.
They moved and seconded to approve applications number two-three dash zero-zero-four-five-five dash one through two-three dash zero-zero-four-five-five dash four inclusive. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, applications are approved. Calling agenda item number twelve, applications number two-three dash zero-zero-four-three-seven dash one through two-three dash zero-zero-four-three-seven dash one-zero from Seventeen A Productions LLC DBA Winter Wonderland.
And just, no Halloween, it's Christmas.
Can you just introduce yourself for the?
Oh, I'm sorry. Rich Shibasaki-Garro, R-I-C-K-S-H-I-B-A. Pretty little bit of Christmas, so we will host for November, take down Halloween, reset for Christmas, until December thirtieth. And again, we did apply till two AM up until the thirtieth, and on the twelve-thirty, we will close at eleven fifty-nine, so we will not go into the thirty-first. With exactly thirty days, December first to December thirtieth.
So you folks aren't gonna be open for New Year's Eve?
No, because, you know, my clients are like, you were. Gonna be at home.
So you'll be at YK too?
No, no, I'll be at my parents'.
Just making sure, sometimes we have some confusion on the dates.
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioners, questions, type of actions?
Just I guess one little question will be, so again, you're looking at one hundred and fifty people. Are you looking at keeping it the same with no minors? Or are you looking to have the minors just since Christmas now?
No minors, yeah. It just keeps it easier for everybody, same thing, just Christmas theme, Christmas themed drinks.
So different themes, same functionally?
Same function, Evan floor through the elevator.
And to approve application numbers two-three dash zero-zero-four-three-seven dash one through two-three dash zero-zero-four-three-seven dash one-zero inclusive.
Second.
They moved and seconded to approve applications number two-three dash zero-zero-four-three-seven dash one through two-three dash four, a zero-zero-four-three-seven dash one-zero inclusively. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, applications are approved.
Thank you.
Yes, reminded me, Christmas is coming up, lovely. Temporary license applications calling agenda item number thirteen, application number two, two dash two, four, seven, five, five from Yun Kyung Yang DBA Friendly Store, Mr. Luke.
And Rick, reflect when Luke is attorney for the applicant. On this matter, I need a continuance to October twentieth to address issue.
Wait, all right, Ms. Harai?
Yes. If you would, please.
Okay, motion to continue this matter to October twenty.
Second.
Then move then second to continue agenda item number thirteen to October twentieth, two thousand twenty two. Any objections or reservations hearing none? I also vote I, the matter is continued. Thank you, Mr. Luke. Calling agenda item number fourteen, application number two, two dash, dash, two, five, zero, five, seven from T B Restaurant LLC DBA Takori El Gallo Rosa, Mr. Kiu Chi.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Kiu Chi for the applicant. We've reviewed the investigative report, we have no additions or corrections to the report. And we'd like to pick up the license tomorrow. This is the site of the O K K K Kitchen, which is closed for quite a while. And the report is accurate that K K K Kitchen, while light, well, still operating and didn't have a license and so said.
Yes, I think we discussed this in the previous hearing, correct?
That is correct.
And this space is going to be redeveloped in the coming years?
It's gonna be redeveloped according to what I understand from our cues by twenty twenty five. So I've got at least one other client in there and I've made both clients aware that these leases are short term.
Applicant has had success at their two other locations, correct?
One other location, Derek Kai Loa, they're doing very well. This is a strange combination, an Australian chef whose main restaurant is in Mexico City that does Mexican food.
Commissioners, questions or type of action?
Any question I had is, I can't remember. So I know that currently, right, you guys have to have seating outside too, right?
Right.
So they, they might be serving out there as well?
They're gonna be serving out there as well. You remember, there's some space inside. The space outside is larger and, and that was part, you know, and frankly, if you look at the business model for K K K Kitchen, really kind of required them to do that kind of numbers in terms of seating for it to work. This is kind of departure from when El Gallo's got in Cairo because it's a lot smaller. So this is like three times this.
Yeah. The question I was gonna ask is, is he gonna have, I mean, I think I'd be there when they first opened it.
Right.
There was no one stationed outside, are they gonna have someone kind of, they need to watch because that space is pretty open.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be very different than it is in Cairo because if you, you know, when we did Cairo, we licensed that little fenced in area outside, but there are windows. So there, it's a lot more visible. With this outside area, you've got a little bit of a barrier. So they, they're planning to station somebody outside, which they kind of have to to monitor it. Because you gotta remember, this is not real cheap alcohol, right? Because it's upper end beer, upper end, you know, tequila, but still that doesn't excuse them from not monitoring. So that's what they'll do.
My only question was that was because I know you're gonna have a lot of traffic from the theaters and everything else walking through that area. We just wanna make sure that, you know, somebody's gonna be out there to monitor.
Yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll monitor.
And do they still have that driveway open? That, that's the main driveway, right, right next to that?
Yeah, the driveways still open. One of the things when we did this license, we had to make sure, you know, there's still barriers up, you know, remain barriers.
That's my concern is that there's only that little like fence thing, you know, and there, a lot of people going in and out. And if they get a big crowd right there, people are drinking, it might become a safety issue.
No, I understand, so we're gonna make sure we monitor that. But Kai Loa, probably a third of their sales are take. So I don't know what's gonna happen at this site. I mean, they've been operating, but from what I understand, it's, it's a little bit higher mix of diners because of this.
We do wanna see that space operating again. Any question, any additional questions, commissioners?
Question, just a statement, in a prior hearing, Commissioner Miyashiro had some reservations and concerns regarding the approval of a temporary license from a previously expired license in two thousand and seven. I did share in those concerns, however, given the unique circumstances of this matter, I am inclin- inclined to approve it. So I will make a motion to approve application number two, two dash two, five, zero, five, seven.
Second.
Then move then second to approve application number two, two dash two, five, zero, five, seven. Any objections or reservations hearing none? I also vote I, motion is carried, application is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kiu Chi. Calling agenda item number fifteen, application number two, three dash zero, zero, three, five, one from T S Grasp Inc. DBA Kraken Kitchen, Mr. Huo.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner Members, cannot appear in for the applicant. My right is Jean Susan J E A N S U K I, so officer and director of the applicant. This is an application for standalone camp license. The applicant has been in operation under a special license, a premises since August twenty second.
Motion to approve application number two, three dash zero, zero, three, five, one.
Second.
Then move then second to approve application number two, three dash zero, zero, three, five, one. Any objections or reservations hearing none? I also vote I, motion is carried, application is approved. Thank you, Mr. Huo.
Thank you.
Moving into the caterer license applications, calling agenda item number sixteen, application number two, three dash zero, zero, four, five, three from Sedexo America LLC, Mr. Solusad. You're on mute.
Oh, sorry, hello, sorry. I, Justin Solusad, S O L U S O D, appearing on behalf of Sedexo America LLC. There are no changes to the investigative report, just an update on ticket counts as of yesterday, which is at thirty five hundred forty eight.
And this is for the Kilani concert, correct?
Kilani concert, yes.
Commissioners, questions or type of action for the applicant?
Motion to approve application number two, three dash zero, zero, four.
Second.
Then move then second to approve application number two, three dash zero, zero, four, five, three. Any objections or reservations hearing none? I also vote I, motion is carried, application is approved. Thank you, Mr. Solusad, have a good event.
Thank, thank you, you too.
Calling agenda item number seventeen, application number two, three dash zero, zero, four, seven, six from G Plus LLC DBA Pagoda Floating Restaurant, Sora Bowl Restaurant.
Good afternoon, I'm the applicant, my name is Kelvin, K E L V I N, last name Nakahata, N A K A H A T A, representing G Plus LLC DBA Pagoda Floating Restaurant, Sora Bowl.
Davis, C H R I S T Y, D A, parking director. And this is for the Haleiina Awards Ceremony, correct?
Yes.
Coming up on September sixteenth. Commissioners, questions or type of action for the applicant?
Just to confirm that the war packet has been updated with supplemental information with respect to the footprint of the premises, the proposed premises, which should be in your blue folders and also uploaded.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Le, we received this supplemental report.
To confirm that the supplements, the new revised licensed area no longer covers the parking lot area. Correct.
One of the quick questions I have, just thinking of the new floor plan. So delineate, right, the red marked area that is going to be for consumption. Is there gonna be any type of barricades or anything put up in between the parking lot area and where the, you know, alcohol will actually be? The, able to drink or serve?
Yeah, so the park is currently fenced off.
Okay.
We just access points, which will be manned by security personnel to limit people leaving the park area into the parking lot. So no alcohol will be permitted outside of the park.
Okay. The entrance points that will be where people will have the banding or I V checks or will be?
There's one single entrance point for all attendees. At that point, every attendee will be, the I V will be checked.
Motion to approve application number two, three dash zero, zero, four, seven, six.
Second.
Then move then second to approve application number two, three dash zero, zero, four, seven, six. Any objections or reservations hearing none? I also vote I, motion is carried, application is approved. Have a great event, guys. Last calling agenda item number eighteen, request number two, three dash zero, zero, four, two, seven from Il Steak LLC DBA Village Bottle Shop.
Hello, Timothy Golden, partner, G O L D E N.
So this is a request to temporarily increase your license premises, correct? This is for the same space that you folks have been using next to your, your premises?
Correct.
Commissioners, any questions or type of action for the applicant?
Just a quick question, though, it does say you are looking at between two hundred and fifty to three hundred people. Is your estimate still around fifty minors or is it that estimate a little bit higher now?
It's probably a bit lower, so the events for U H alumni, it's not being marketed towards the, the school age kids. So when we were talking with the U H Alumni Association, they're more about actually like families with kids coming versus college age kids. So, and the events only from six to nine, so the, the other times are to allow setup and breakdown.
The event itself is actually from six to nine, you said, correct?
Correct, yes. And it features, it, it's, it's a maker's market, so there's other vendors there that are all U H alumni owned businesses. So what they try to do is like Village, get, make sure all of the vendors there. So there's some crafts, different type of clothing makers that are all U H alumnis.
Just to confirm, no other vendors will be serving alcohol, correct?
Correct, just us, not we, we, that's not how Comemia Schools allows it in the barn.
Motion to approve request number two, three dash zero, zero, four, two, seven.
Second.
Then move then second to approve request number two, three dash zero, zero, four, two, seven. Any objections or reservations hearing none? I also vote I, motion is carried, request is granted. Thank you, Mr. Golden.
Thank you. You too, thanks.
Link agenda item number nineteen, request number two, three dash zero, zero, four, seven, seven from Mr. Ronald Young on behalf of Yacht Harbor Towers.
I'm Ronald Young, president of the board for Yacht Harbor Towers. I'll spell your name, Ronald, R O N A L D, last name, Y O U N G.
I'm John Martin, J O H N M A R T, secretary of A O O Yacht Harbor Towers Inc. and director.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. And this is a request to use alternative documents to verify your nonprofit status, is that correct?
Yes, so we are applying for, for a single event on the number fifth to celebrate the fiftieth anniversary of Yacht Harbor Towers. We expect that. Those events, four hour events, totally on Yacht Harbor Towers premises with security there. The documentation that we are submitting to establish our nonprofit status is our incorporation papers with the state of Hawaii and a document from D C C A confirming our nonprofit status.
I don't believe they have copies of that. Yeah.
Like, if we could just.
Yes. Have anything else?
Our preparation paper?
Sure.
Actually, we submitted our tax return, which is only on August fifth, five.
Thank you. And I'm just. You know, since we have a little bit of time, I used to live at Yacht Harbor Towers. My grandmother used to live on the ninth floor and I lived here. Yes, lovely building. Oh, I can afford. You have a nice community there, you have a nice community there.
Thank you.
Where are you folks planning to have this event? Is it up at the pool deck?
Yes, on the pool deck level.
And you're gonna use the cabana and the little area outside of the?
The fifth floor.
Okay.
Of the windbreak area, then the open area.
Waiting for your folks' documentation so that we can take a look at it.
I have some questions, I guess, while we wait. Are you exempt from taxation under section five oh one C of the Internal Revenue Code?
We're exempt from taxation under four, fourteen of the Hawaii statute.
Four, fourteen is the nonprofit act, that's not a tax inception act.
That's the fact, that's the nonprofit status, we're submitting this application under.
That's the case, why are you also submitting I R S form eleven twenty dash H?
That's the, I'm not familiar with that form.
That's the income tax form that you filed as an exhibit.
I didn't prepare the application, so I, I don't have that form in my file.
I'll give my request, it's what was submitted with the original request while, while the, he's distributing the. Yes.
I think I have it now, that was a nonprofit tax return, it was just submitted to establish the nonprofit status of the association. For the purpose of this application, I would just rely on the D C C A notice.
Also checked with our auditor and this is the return she files and she confirmed that that is a eleven twenty H form that is for nonprofits.
So.
So move.
Yep.
Second.
Okay, um, it's been moved and seconded to convene into executive session to review documents and to confirm with legal counsel. I also vote I, we are now in executive session. The record. And we have some time to discuss some, other commissioners, do you have any additional questions or type of action?
Motion to approve request number two, three dash zero, zero, four, seven, seven. Uh, motion to approve request number two, three dash zero, zero, four, seven, seven.
Second.
Then move that second and to approve request number two, three dash zero, zero, four, seven, seven. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also hold I, motion is carried, uh, request is approved. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Link agenda item number twenty, request number two, three dash zero, zero, four, eight, four from Mr. David Webb, authorized agent on behalf of Bamboo Catering, Inc. Mr. Webb.
How are you today?
Doing great, how are you?
Doing great. David Webb, authorized agent, Bamboo Catering.
Request to, uh, change the event date for one that we already previously approved, correct?
It's like the very next morning after the hearing, the call, the ask, the chance that I've just got the license approved. I guess they felt they'd do better doing it on a Saturday than on raising money, and it's a fun reason, on a Saturday than on the first. Probably having trouble selling tickets.
Not changed to the original application. Okay, thank you. Commissioners.
Motion to approve request number two, three dash zero, zero, four, eight, four.
Second.
Then move that second and to approve request number two, three dash zero, zero, four, eight, four. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also hold I, motion is carried, request is granted.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number twenty-one, request number two, three dash zero, zero, five, zero, six from Keith Kiuchi Esquire on behalf of Hosh Korean Grill LLC.
Sir, Chief Madam Chair Members of the Commission, Keith Kiuchi for the applicant. Um, this is a question to waive the temporary license for, to the site of the Old Lounge Eros. If you go farther back, it's where Pyramid's Restaurant, a couple.
When did, when did Lounge Eros?
Twenty twenty-one, in thirty twenty-two.
Presume no intervening.
No, no intervening, um, app, no intervening tenant, what been telling people they come to be, if you got an intervening tenant, you got a problem.
To approve request number two, three dash zero, zero, five, zero, six.
Then move and second it to approve request number two, three dash zero, zero, five, zero, six. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also hold I, request is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just can I have a type of action for agenda items twenty-two through thirty-two?
And what is going to be for adoption of decision and order for items number twenty-two through thirty-two?
Second.
The movement seconded, uh, for the, to approve the adoption of decision and order for agenda items twenty-two through thirty-two inclusively. I also vote I, motion is carried, uh, adoption and decision and orders approved. So moving into adjudications, good afternoon, Mr. Napziger.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, uh, Thomas Napziger, Deputy Corporation Council on behalf of the city county of Honolulu.
Last name, Commissioners, Kalani Court, E V Babbi's, Gifford Chang. G I F F O R D C H A N G.
Let me call you.
Sorry.
Sorry. I think, calling agenda item number thirty-three, Cindy's Pace. So, Mr. Chang already made his appearance.
So, Mr. Napziger, can you read the charge?
Honor about October thirtieth, twenty twenty, licensee failed to timely submit the name of every person then employed on the license premise who is registered with the commission or who is subject to registration on the date and in such manner as directed by the commission in violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point eight, the rules of the liquor commission of the city county of Honolulu.
Apologies, last name.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chang, how would you like to plead?
I'd like to plead not guilty.
The plea, most except the plea, second.
He said not guilty?
Oh, yeah.
We just need to, uh, uh, read the spiel and then, um, for contested hearing.
So, there's a few, um, language that we need to read into the record for you, um, Mr. Chang. So, since you have pled not guilty and wish to return for a contested hearing, there are a few procedures that the commission requires you follow. First, uh, seven days before the contested hearing, both the prosecution and licensee must disclose to each other their proposed exhibits. Exhibits that are not timely disclosed may not be considered at the contested hearing. Second, the parties must disclose to each other the names of all witnesses and the proposed testimony of each witness seven days before the contested hearing. Witnesses that are not timely disclosed may not be allowed to testify at the contested hearing. Third, each party, parties exhibits must be uploaded to the liquor commission's Google Drive by four P M on the Wednesday before the contested hearing. Information on how that can be accomplished will be provided to the parties and will be available on the liquor commission's website. If you have any physical evidence that cannot be uploaded but to the Google Drive, please be sure to let both liquor commission and the other party know. As a reminder to each party, personal information such as medical information, social security numbers, birth dates, or bank account numbers must be redacted by the party whose exhibit contains that information.
Yes, I do, I'm wondering if we could have a few discussion before we go to such a hearing. We do good.
If, since you, since you pled not guilty, we have to go through the process of the, of the contested hearing. If, if you would like to change your plea to no contest, then you can have the opportunity to explain after we've gone through the process of accepting the plea. Um, but if you, but we cannot have a discussion on the merits of the case at this time. Um, unless you would be interested in changing your plea, then we can go through that process today. But if you want to deny the plea, then we need to move it to a later date and then we can, then at that time, the merits of the case will be discussed and presented.
Thank you, um, Commissioners, and I'd like to choose my plea to vote on this.
So you have a motion to accept the plea?
Oh, no, we, you got a move, or are you the mover?
Okay. So, I need a, a motion to accept the plea.
The revised plea.
Yeah, the revised, sorry.
Thank you.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to accept the revised no contest plea. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also hold I, the no contest plea is accepted at this time. And we'll give you an opportunity to, um, to provide comments, Mr. Chang.
So, your recommend, your recommendations?
So again, uh, this violation occurred on October thirtieth, twenty twenty, when licensee failed to submit their employee listing. This is licensee's first violation, the recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars.
So, Mr. Chang, this is now your opportunity.
Thank you.
Your explanation.
Commissioners, I mean, we understand that, but that is during the COVID time. The inspectors were there, and all, the bars been shut down, and there's no employees at the time. And granted, maybe we didn't follow property of their, their example not timely, but no, the bar has never been opened. I'm just asking the commission, prosecutor, to take that understanding. I understand the two fifty is not much, but over that, it is somehow, and it's considered to be.
Mr. Chang, when did the bar close?
I think it, it had to close as soon as the city ordinance, um, said all bars got shut down, so I don't know that date, I'm sorry.
It says that this violation occurred on or about October thirtieth, twenty twenty, which was in the year that we had ordered shutdowns. Um, Mr. Napziger, do you have any additional information you could provide on, on the, this business?
Uh, I have nothing further to add at this time.
But you are, um, it's, it's, you're, you're testing through the record that the business was closed at the time of this violation.
Yes, yes.
And there were no customers, there were no employees, there was no one on the premises.
In fact, that is correct, there's no customers, no employees, nothing on the premises. We've been doing, using that time to actually fix the bar, the renovation. I'm finding the tenant or manager at the time, I'm sorry, but that's why Cindy's name changed to Babbi's after. So, yes, that is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chang.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. My motion will be for a letter of reprimand for agenda item number thirty-three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item thirty-three. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also hold I, a letter of reprimand. Calling agenda item thirty-four, Babbi's. You can be mean, Cindy, Mr. Chang, it's okay, we're, we're not like Maui.
Oh, you're bad teeth.
Poor Maui.
But please introduce yourself again for the record.
Gifford Chang, G I F F O R D C H A N G, C H A N G, Kalani Court, E V Babbi's.
Honor about December twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to notify the commission in writing of the name, age, and place of residence of an officer or director to wit, Bob Siamfo, uh, within thirty days from the date of election of such officer or director in violation of section two eighty-one dash forty-one subsection I of the Hawaii revised statutes.
Mr. Chang, how would you like to plead?
What contest?
Motion to accept the plea?
Second.
Then move that seconded to accept the no contest fee for agenda item thirty-four. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, the no contest plea is accepted.
Mr. Napziger.
Uh, again, this violation occurred on December twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one, when licensee failed to notify the commission of an officer or director. Uh, this is licensee's first violation, the recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Name, Mr. Chang.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Again, although it is five hundred dollars, we'd like to ask the commission to, um, have a gift of understanding. During that time, I think, um, when you submit a form like that, you have to get a notary done, is that correct? Prosecutor?
Uh, that's a good question, I'm not sure.
Okay, so I'm, I'm quite certain that whenever you do a change of that type, the notaries required. And as you know, during that time, notaries are very difficult to obtain, very hard to obtain. Um, you could check with the attorney general's office, our guy, he did submit the paper, but he couldn't get a notary as soon as we got it, it was sent in. Again, the bar wasn't opening at that time, to January, and so we knew that that was happening, our, our business transactions were taking place, but again, we had difficulties dealing with fighting a notary at the time.
I will note for the commission that it appears that the document was notarized on January sixth, uh, twenty twenty-two.
So we did try to rush it our best, that's what I'm trying to say.
Well, I see that this violation occurred on December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, so it was
About a week.
About a week afterwards, you folks were able to obtain.
Yeah, we just said vague and vague and vague.
Okay, all right, thank you.
About a week and over a holiday.
Yes, over the New Year's holiday. All right.
Okay. My motion will be to, um, issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number three.
Second.
Then move that seconded to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item thirty-four. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, a letter of reprimand will be issued. Thank you, Mr. Chang. Calling agenda item thirty-five, Mark Bocco.
I'm seeing, you hit the charge.
Uh, charge one, honor about December eighteen, twenty twenty-one, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to have a time card or other adequate records showing in English the month, day, year, and time indicating AM or PM and the legal first name and surname of its employee, Serena Mahalani Lucas, when that employee was on duty in violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point four subsection A of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu. Charge two, honor about December eighteen, twenty twenty-one, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee utilized an electronic or otherwise recorded payroll registration for the purposes of keeping employee time cards or other adequate records in accordance uh, without first obtaining the administrator's approval in violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point four subsection C of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Sir, not sound, excuse me for mispronouncing your name, um, how would you like to plead for charge one?
Uh, guilty.
Actually, I need to go individually to accept the pleas? Um, are you okay if I also ask you for the second one as well?
Yeah.
How would you like to plead for charge two? Yeah, so, for charge one, we need a motion to accept the plea.
Guilty, right?
Second.
Then move that seconded to accept the plea for agenda item thirty-five, charge one. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, the plea is accepted for charge one.
So, for charge two, since it's on the, you pled not guilty.
Yes, so for the not guilty charge, we will need to move that to, uh, a future hearing so that you and also the prosecutor can prepare for a contested case. Um, so, is it okay if we, um, we adjudicate a charge one at this time, and then at the end of that, we can read you the instructions for the contested case? Uh, why don't we move forward, um, with a recommendation, Mr. Napziger, for charge one?
Hey, for charge one, uh, this late, this violation occurred on December eighteen, twenty twenty-one, when licensee failed to have an adequate time card for its employee. This is licensee's second violation, the recommended fine is three hundred and fifty dollars. The first violation occurred on March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one with a two hundred and fifty dollar fine.
Mr. Napziger, any, um, explanations for charge one?
It's just that we've been careless not, uh, putting her name down, we did have, uh, our, uh, part, uh, but she, she was kind of like, uh, out of laziness, uh, she put on her cell phone. Uh, she, she thought that it's fine, it's okay for her to, to report her out on cell phone. After that, uh,
Additional?
Uh, no further comment.
Yes, so, um, my motion is going to be to approve the recommended fine of three hundred and fifty dollars for charge one.
Second.
Then move that seconded to approve the recommended fine of three hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item thirty-five, charge one. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also hold I, uh, the three hundred and fifty dollar fine is approved. And, um, in regards to your, um, denial plea for charge two, Commissioner Hollenker will read you the instructions.
So, I'm gonna read you some instructions, um, since you've pled, I'm not guilty, and wish to return for a contested hearing. There are a few procedures with that the commission requires you to follow. First, seven days before the contested hearing, both the prosecution and licensee must disclose to each other their proposed exhibits. Exhibits that are not timely disclosed may not be considered at the contested hearing. Second, the parties must disclose to each other the names of all witnesses and the proposed testimony of each witness seven days before the contested hearing. Witnesses that are not timely disclosed may not be allowed to testify at the contested hearing. Third, each party's exhibits must be uploaded to the liquor commission's Google Drive by four P M on the Wednesday before the contested hearing. Information on how that can be accomplished will be provided to the parties and will be available on the liquor commission's website. If you have physics, physical evidence that cannot be uploaded to the Google Drive, please be sure to let both the liquor commission and the other party know. As a reminder to each party, personal information such as medical information, social security numbers, birthdays, or bank account numbers must be redacted by the party whose exhibit contains these information. Any questions?
Um, so, um, can we get a motion to, uh,
Motion.
Continue to the next available.
For a contested hearing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I've been moved in second to continue agenda item thirty-five, uh, charge two to the next available hearing date for a contested case. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, uh, you will be contacted with the hearing date for, uh, for the contested case. Thank you, Mr. Nasali. All right, and calling agenda item number thirty-six, Study Hall Sports Bar and Grill. calling agenda item number thirty-six, Study Hall Sports Bar and Grill. Do you think you could talk for the record?
For me, um, my name is Doug Morrison, M.O.R.R.I.S.O.N.
Um, Mr. Naf, can you do the charge?
Licensee failed to file with the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu, honor before August fourth, twenty-twenty. A report as directed by the commission showing the gross amount of liquor sold by the licensee during the twelve months beginning July first, twenty-nineteen and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty, in violation of rule three dash eighty-one dash seventeen point fifty-four subsection C of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Mr. Morrison, correct?
No contention.
Okay, I was expecting no contest. Motion to accept the plea. Second.
The move second it to accept the no contest fee for agenda item thirty-six.
I have an explanation.
Yes, one moment, please. Any objections or reservations? None, I also vote I. The plea is accepted. And Mr. Naf singer, your recommendation?
Again, this, uh, violation occurred on August fourth, twenty-twenty, when licensee failed to file their, uh, GLS report in time. This is licensee's second violation. The recommended fine is one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
So Morrison, your explanation.
So we there sitting here that were involved when we did the, uh, we did a lot of things that we shouldn't have done. Uh, I studied all playing out of, we had bands playing when they shouldn't have and waiting and waiting to get the, um, entertainment and dance from it. It took forever and most of it was our fault. And then right when we got it, we, um, which was very expensive to keep going and going and going. I had eight thousand dollars in fines, playing out of category just to stay alive. And then when we finally got it, we would, we closed a month later. So, uh, after losing about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on that location, it's been a dog just for about everybody that's been in there. I didn't take any PPE money. I decided I'm just gonna close it for good and do something else, which I did. And so, uh, then I was contacted to do a younger guy to do, to redo the place, because I still had access to the license, but I, uh, I said, okay, I'll try. So I did the GLS report. I paid the thousand dollars in fines. I paid twenty thousand dollars in back taxes. And I've been sick at the time I did all that, but I did it. And so, um, and so as far as not doing the GLS report, I didn't, and I found this out later, I didn't know that I I had to do that if I wasn't in business, because we were out of business. So, um, and then that's why I did it late. It was two hundred and eighty-seven days late, but I was closed. So I didn't think I had to do that. And because it was a terrible time in my life, couple of years of coming in here and it was horrible. But I decided to redo this, because I'm healthier now and and paid everything, everything that I owed, except for this twelve hundred dollars. And I did not know that I had to do the GLS, GLS report. Otherwise, I would have never been two hundred and eighty-seven days late doing it. Um, you know, it's one thing to be a month later, two months late, but that was the reason uh, that we were late, because I just didn't, I was never gonna do it again. I didn't know I had to do it. Chris in the office is the one that told me this was going pretty well, and they're the ones who told me I had to do it. Because I didn't think I did. And, and then especially when I went to get back in business, that's one thing, obviously, I had to make sure was taken care of. And fines, but even the fine, I, we didn't have any money left. It was all, it was all gone from the time that we were going through all this and the pandemic hit. I mean, we didn't have any money left in the corporation. I end up having to pay it myself, which is what I had to do.
This was for, we, let's see, it was a hard pandemic for everyone.
Why not?
We did not enjoy what, what went through it either, you know, um. So this is for fiscal year beginning July first, twenty-nineteen and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty. So were you folks closed for business, um, during twenty-nineteen as well?
Yeah, we were closed for almost two years, I think.
Um, and did you folks, have you turned in the liquor, have the gross liquor sales reports that were required?
Yeah, and I just did another one recently that was, it was only about a small amount, but we just did it. I just did another.
Can I finger, can you confirm that all GLS reports have been, um, submitted and are accurate?
Uh, yes, I received confirmation, um, from the commission auditor earlier this week.
All right, so everything is up to date then for Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
At the time of this year, okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you. So my motion will be to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number thirty-six.
Second.
Then move that second to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item thirty-six. Any objections or reservations? I will say that I will also vote I, but with reservations, and we hope to not see you again, Mr. Morrison, for these types of things. Okay, I would like to come see you at your restaurant instead. Motion is carried, um, and a letter of resh, uh, letter of reprimand will be issued.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item thirty-seven, Thumbs Up Market, Mr. Kiuchi.
Assistant mayor, chair members of the commission, Kiuchi for the licensee. I'd like to continue this for four weeks. Literally, Mr. Luke dropped off the files in my office last week. So, uh, what I really need to do, yeah, I think the commission knows what the violation is about. I need to get some handle of what this guy did and why he did it. So, and he will be here. Uh, I told Mr. Naf singer, I think I need four weeks.
Good.
Over six, why?
So my motion to continue agenda item number thirty-seven to October sixth, twenty-two.
Second.
Then move that seconded to continue agenda item thirty-seven to October sixth. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I. Motion is carried. The agenda item is continued, and please, please have the licensee present. Because I also have questions.
Yeah.
Link agenda item number thirty-eight, West Side Bar and Grill, Kaffalee.
Hey, my name is Leah Upey, so L.A.H.U.P.A.T.E.
Right agent or the owner of the business?
Thank you.
Enough senior here, we did charges, please.
Charge one, honor about August eighteen, twenty-twenty-one, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee failed to have a duly registered manager in active charge of the licensed premises during the time of the establishment is licensed to sell or serve liquor in violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point nine subsection A of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu. Charge two, honor about August eighteen, twenty-twenty-one, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee failed to make time record entries at the time, uh, its employee chassis Pedia uh, reported on duty, and again, when the employer went off duty in violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point four subsection B of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu. Charge three, honor about August eighteen, twenty-twenty-one, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee failed to have a time card or other adequate records showing in English the month, day, year, and time indicating AM or PM and the legal first name and surname of its employee, Madison Fuller, when that employee was on duty in violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point four subsection A of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Excuse me, um, from mispronunciation, Miss Peak?
Yes.
How would you like to plead for charge one?
No contest.
Let me see, sorry, you do each one and then make motion, or we can do all together one time?
It's up to you.
So I'm going to ask you for pleas for all of the charges at one time, and then we'll make one solid motion, okay? So, sweetie, how would you like to, um, plead for charge two? Charge two.
No contest.
Motion will be, um, to accept the pleas of the consensus for charge one, charge two, and charge three.
Second.
Then move that second to accept the no contest, please, for agenda item thirty-eight, for charges one, two, and three. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I. The no contest plea is accepted for agenda item thirty-eight.
Um, sir, now, sir, your recommendations?
Uh, again, these violations all occurred on August eighteen, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, charge one, licensee failed to have a registered manager in charge. This is licensee's first violation. The recommended fine is five hundred dollars. Uh, for charge two, uh, licensee failed to make time record entry for its employee chassis Padilla. Uh, this is the licensee's first violation. The recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars. For charge three, uh, licensee failed to have an adequate time card for its employee. Uh, this is also licensee's first violation. The recommended fine is also two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, so, Miss Pete, you had the opportunity to, uh, provide explanation for all three of the charges.
Well, I mean, I can, I can tell you what happened. You know, it was sort of like the perfect storm. Um, so we run a family business. Uh, so my daughter is actually the general manager. Um, and then Chassie and Madison are both her cousins. So Chassie had a family emergency. Her grandmother was dying, so she left. She did punch in, but she didn't punch out. So I believe that was a two hundred and fifty dollar violation. Uh, but you know, given the circumstances, she wasn't thinking straight. She normally is very good about punching in, punching out. The kitchen was short, um, and we were, we were open for breakfast at that time. This is late at night. Uh, and so the kitchen person had asked Marina to get some ingredients and prep for the next morning. The ingredients weren't there. She was the manager on duty without thinking. Safeway is just two minutes away. She left to go buy the ingredients, came back, and just so happened, um, you know, three liquor investigators had shown up, right? Um, so I think, you know, like I said, it was the perfect storm. I cannot contest, because this is all true and factual. Uh, we, we are in violation for all three accounts. Maybe if I could ask for some consideration, um, you know, Chassie did punch in, and we do have uh, a photograph of that. It's just given her situation with her grandmother, who, who did pass on, actually. Um, she wasn't thinking straight, and she ended up leaving. She did think straight enough to have Madison come in, you know, to work. But then he being Madison did not punch in. And we got, you know, we got dinged for, for three violations. After this took place, I mean, I met with all the staff, the ones that were, you know, that were involved in this situation, as well as all the others, and reminded them again that someone has to be on premises with their card and that everybody is required to punch in, punch out for breaks, punch back in when their break is over, and punch out before they leave. So, you know, I definitely have tried to do remediation. This kind of thing has not happened, you know, in the past year, because these violations are actually a little over a year ago. Um, but I would like to ask for that consideration. I don't mind, uh, you know, paying the five hundred and the two fifty, but given the special circumstance with Chassie, you know, with a very close, uh, family member passing away, she simply forgot to punch out.
No, we have nothing to add.
No, my motion will be to, um, recommend, uh, adoption of the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for charge one. Um, I would be to issue a letter of reprimand for charge two, and also a letter of reprimand for charge three. Uh, but please make sure we have a manager on duty, because this is very important.
I'll second that.
They moved that seconded to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for charge one. And they should let our reprimands for charges two and three. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I. Motion is carried. The five hundred dollar fine is approved for charge one, okay? So, yes, of course, good luck, and we're sorry for, um, your, your employee's loss. Thank you. All right, moving on to agenda item number thirty-nine, club business.
Uh, commissioners, I spoke with, uh, the representative for club business. Uh, they requested a continuance for the next six items. Would you like me to read out the LCB numbers for those?
Um, yes, so that we can, we can continue them all together.
Okay, uh, so we will be continuing agenda item number thirty-nine, LCB twenty-two dash zero 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 six, uh, club business. Agenda item number forty, LCB twenty-two dash zero zero three two, club business. Then item forty-one, LCB nineteen dash zero two two four, uh, new business now known as club business. Agenda item forty-two, LCB nineteen dash zero two four nine, uh, new business now known as club business. Agenda item number forty-three, uh, LCB twenty dash zero zero one three, club business. And agenda item number forty-four, uh, LCB twenty-one dash zero one two five, club business. Um, I also want to represent that the licensee, uh, stated that he would be changing his plea for the four contested cases to a no contest, uh, at the next available hearing.
These are all continued to the next available.
That's correct.
All right, thank you. Uh, so that brings us to agenda item forty-five, calling agenda item forty-five, Smith's Union Bar, Mr. Kiuchi.
We have to move out of chair members. Kiuchi for the licensee wavering in a charge in her plea of no.
Motion to accept.
Second.
They moved that second to accept the no contest fee for agenda item forty-five. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I. The no contest plea is accepted.
Sir, I'm seeing your recommendation.
This violation occurred on October eighth, twenty-twenty-one, when licensee violated COVID orders by failing to collect contact tracing information. This is licensee's third violation. The recommended fine is one thousand dollars. Uh, the first violation occurred on March twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one, uh, which resulted in a six hundred and eighty dollar fine. The second violation occurred on May fifth, twenty-twenty-one, which resulted in a seven hundred and fifty dollar fine.
I'm gonna get on my soapbox for one time about the Department of Health, because my client gave me his contact tracing logs. He's got them. The problem is that they're not complete, so either they've got a phone number or they've gotten in the trust. The problem I got with the Department of Health is, you know, I've been doing this a long time. Never one on any of my clients has the Department of Health collected this information, never once. Yet the one time they should have done it, which is for my client Christine's out in I A. Owner died of COVID. There were five people in the bar that night that got COVID. Not a single call, not a single call from the Department of Health. That's where they should have been doing this. I understand the requirement, and my client tried. Um, but you know what? It's not merely an exercise to have businesses do this and then get dinged because they didn't do it. And the Department of Health should be following up. And the example of Christine's, how could you not? How could you not follow up when you've got five people that got COVID from the bar, one that died? There are three staff members that got COVID. That's ridiculous. So I've said my piece, Department of Health. I'm not gonna say it any other time. I just, you know, I've talked to clients, and I swear, none of them have ever had Department of Health collect the information. So.
I, since you're on a soapbox, Mr. Kiuchi, I will join you in saying that this commission never asked to be the COVID enforcement police.
Absolutely.
This commission also did not write any of the orders or have much say in writing any of the orders.
I, I, I understand. I've talked to Mr. Ryan. I know who wrote them.
Right.
But that's a separate issue.
You know, as you know, and I've mentioned to other licensees and their representatives, none of us enjoyed this. It was a hard pandemic for everyone, um, myself included. Is it over? Who knows? And I don't even know if it's over yet. Um, so none of this has been enjoyable for any of us, and I agree with your assessment that there has been let's just say unequal or uneven application of the law in regards to the COVID emergency orders.
And, and it started, my client needed to have information. I, I think he tried. I think he had at least either a phone number or an address. But, you know, the rule is the rule, but my point is that not everybody was treated equally, or maybe they weren't never obtained the information. So anyway, I understand, and I understand this wasn't the commission's choice to, uh, You know, that came from further up, so.
Let me ask this, either you or Mr. Naf singer. So this was the third violation, and this, this licensee was fined two times before. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Have they paid those fines?
Yeah.
You know?
I do not have that information. I have no reason to doubt that.
Do we know also if this resulted in a twenty four hour shutdown?
This one did. I'm not sure the other two did. That, that's why, that's the only reason initially, when my client got this contested. This was a twenty four hour shutdown.
One resulted in.
Yeah, the other two, I don't know. And to be perfectly candid. Mr. Naf singer, and when I were talking about this licensee, he's got a violation, but neither Mr. Naf singer and I. Know what that is. We're gonna get the report, so. There is something outstanding out there, and I'm not a hundred percent sure what it is. I want to just be perfectly candid.
Okay, and let me ask you this. Either of you know this. Is this the last violation this? This licensee received under the COVID nineteen emergency order? Or are we gonna see them again?
It appears that the next one is also a COVID violation. It's another two eighty one thirty eight. I'm assuming that's COVID. And that was eight days after this violation.
Did we know what, what that was?
I, I don't. I just have the list on for me.
What is seeing as we are looking at this violation, they were fined and have paid the fines for the two previous violations.
That's correct.
And I think some leniency on their behalf.
And I did confirm there was a twenty four hour shutdown in this instance.
The information. Our motion is going to be to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number forty five.
Move that second to approve a letter of, issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item forty five. Any objections or reservations? And say that I will vote I with reservations, Mr. Kiuchi. A letter of reprimand will be issued for agenda item forty five.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Calling agenda item forty six, liquor administrator, Ms. Hori, anything to add to the weekly report? Nope, thank you. All right, seeing as we have no further agenda items.